Good evening, Fillmore. We're about to start our program with the candidates for city council. We're just going to wait a couple of moments for Zoom to let everybody into the meeting. Please stand by. Okay. Good evening, Fillmore. This is David Marin with the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. Tonight, we're going to hear from the candidates who are running for Fillmore City Council. In the Fillmore City Council race, you will be electing three candidates. I believe, three, correct? Yes, three candidates for the seats on the council. With that, it's my pleasure to first introduce the president of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County, Betsy Patterson.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to welcome you all on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. 100 years ago, the 19th Amendment was ratified, giving women across the nation the right to vote. We hold that vote, that right to vote precious since not all people were given that right in the original constitution. And for 100 years, the League of Women Voters has been dedicated to encouraging civic engagement and informing voters about the candidates and the issues. From its beginnings and continuing today, the league is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate or political party. Each of us has a voice in our government if we use our vote. To be informed voters, we must ask questions of the candidates and understand the pros and cons of each ballot proposition before we cast our vote. Thank you for joining us tonight. We hope you have many of your questions answered by the candidates. Good evening.
Thank you, Betsy. So we will be hearing opening statements from each candidate, and then we'll have the answers to the questions many of you submitted on the website, followed by closing statements. We randomly drew numbers, and we will begin our opening statements with our first candidate, Tim Holgram. I'm sorry, Tim.
That's all right. Good evening, David. Thank you. I want to thank you for moderating tonight. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters of Ventura County for hosting this opportunity. But mostly, I want to say thank you to the voters who are tuning in tonight to watch, to find out what the candidates have to say. This is how you make an informed decision, and I applaud everyone who's watching. I'm Tim Holmgren, currently the mayor of Fillmore, and I'm running for reelection because Fillmore is on a good track and has been on an upward trajectory for the past several years. If you remember back, not too long ago, Fillmore was in bad shape. We were out of money, canceling basic city services, and we had no reserves. The city finance director at that time told me that we were less than a year away from bankruptcy. One thing changed all that, the right people at the helm. A responsible, results-oriented council was seated, and almost immediately, everything started to improve. The city of Fillmore is now on an upward trend and needs leaders who can continue this direction. It is not time to move backwards, but to continue to lead the way so that Fillmore continues to be the kind of place that parents want to raise their children. I'm running to continue working to make that happen, and I'm asking for your vote on November 3rd to make sure it does.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Mark Austin.
Good evening. I'd first like to thank the league for hosting all the candidates. My name is Mark Austin. I'm running for reelection to the Fillmore City Council. I've been a member of the Fillmore Lions Club. I've served on the city council as both the council member and the mayor pro temp. I'm currently the mayor pro temp. I've served on the planning commission for 12 years, and I was the chair for seven of those years. I serve on the Budget Ad-Hoc Committee, the Economic Development Corporation Committee, and I serve as a board member representing the city on the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance and the Ventura County Regional Sanitation District. I've committed 16 years of my life to Fillmore. I hold a BS in Natural Resources in Cal Poly San Luis Obispo and an MBA from Cal State Channel Islands. I'm a proud business owner of Meridian Consultants in Thousand Oaks. I employ about 25-plus people. We gross about 4.5 million a year. I'd like to say I'm endorsed by Ernie Vegas, former mayor of Fillmore, Scott Lee, former mayor of Fillmore, and Steve Conaway, former mayor of Fillmore. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Esther Shiva Kame Taylor.
Hello. Good evening. I want to say thank you to everyone who's tuned in tonight and also watching this recording later. My name is Esther Taylor, affectionately known as Shiva Kame Esther, lifelong Fillmore resident, first-time candidate. I am the daughter of a Vietnam veteran and retired LAPD officer and a local business owner. I am a former ambulance EMT and EMT skills instructor for Ventura College. Working as an EMT gave me the skills to be adaptable and remain calm in stressful situations and make hard decisions in stressful times. I felt called to run for city council when I was part of a local activist group and found it to be difficult to reach out to my local leadership. After speaking with Councilwoman Lynn Edmonds and asking her about what does it mean to run for city council? What is the jurisdiction? What does it mean to work on building policy? And how can I be part of the change I want to see in this town for myself and my daughter? I got some valuable feedback from her and other mentors and spent time self-reflecting and joined up with Christina Reyes Vea Senor and decided to run on a slate with her to help build a more equitable future for Fillmore.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ari Larson.
Hello, my name is Ari Larson, and I'm running for Fillmore City Council because I'm focused on both the needs of the people of Fillmore and increasing the vitality of the business in our community. Through many years of volunteering, I have been able to convert connections I have made into business referrals for Fillmore. I have developed large and wide relationships based on trust with many people and businesses, both in and outside of Fillmore. Utilizing my own sales experience and the tools of social media, I regularly promote businesses in our community for their goods and services. I have fostered a relationship with local business owners from my years of going door-to-doors, relaying information to help expand their business and listening to their concerns. Some of the organizations that I belong to include Rotary Club of Fillmore, Suroptimist International Fillmore, Santa Clara Valley Hospice, Fab, which is Fillmore Association of Business, and Boys and Girls Club of Santa Clara Valley. I have been able to foster that relationship that is needed, and I also have great communication skills, troubleshooting skills, and leadership skills that will be vital in making decisions with a wide variety of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Christina Reyes Vea Senor.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christina Reyes Vea Senor, and I thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this forum tonight, and thank you for everyone who's tuning in. I am a lifelong resident of the Santa Clara Valley. I grew up in Santa Paula. I am the granddaughter of farmworkers on both my parents', sorry, my mother's side and my father's side. And in my family, we have a very successful construction business that has always used union labor. And so I'm very supportive of unions, and I do have the endorsement also of the 805 Carpenters Union and also Leuna Laborers Union. I have been a resident of Fillmore for 10 years, but I have to say, for the first seven years, I was quite the commuter. I worked for the LA County Department of Public Health for 11 years. I have a master's in public health from UCLA, and my BA is in sociology from UC Berkeley. The last three years, though, I've been blessed to be a stay-at-home mom with my daughter, Belen. And so just in the last three years, I've been more active in the community, taking my daughter to the story hour at the library and meeting other residents and families here in town. I see that Fillmore has many assets, but I believe that there are assets that have yet to be tapped and particularly addressing some disparities and equities for our working families. And so as your candidate, along with Shiva Kame Esther, we hope to address those in the city of Fillmore and bring our city together and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to begin our questions. Mark, you'll be up first. The question mark is, the question is, tell us your positions about growing marijuana and hemp in the Fillmore and nearby unincorporated areas? And what do you feel is the, do you support having marijuana dispensaries or cannabis dispensaries? I think you just muted.
Okay. Well, first of all, we've discussed this over and over at council. We kept batting it back and forth, and it kept coming back to us more than once. I meant three or four times. And so at one point, it was proposed, why don't we just put it on a ballot measure and let the people vote on what they wanted? Well, that was put on the ballot in 2018, and it went down. And it kind of made it clear, sent a clear message of what this community wanted. We didn't want marijuana. And so we can't undo that. We can't bring marijuana to the city even if we wanted to as a council because that has to go back to the voters to be voted against. In other words, our hands are tied at this point. It doesn't really matter how I feel about marijuana. I mean, it's a done deal at this point. There is not going to be any marijuana in Fillmore. So I'd just like to say that right up front. Outside in the area of Ventura County, fine, go for it. I meant that they're free to do whatever they want out there. But in the city limits, that's the decision the voters have made, and that's what we got to live by. Thank you.
Okay. And up next is Ari. So Ari, the question is, what can be done to stop marijuana and hemp from being grown and processed in Fillmore and nearby unincorporated areas? And we've already heard about the citizens' vote regarding dispensaries.
Yes. Well, I tend to agree with Mark. Like he said, it's a done deal as far as the city limits. As far as outside the city limits, we will see. I know some people, I've talked to a few people, and they said business revenue would be good for Fillmore. I've also heard from others that are concerned about maybe criminal elements. So that is something that I will be researching. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina, same question to you. What do you think can be done to stop marijuana and hemp from being grown and processed in Fillmore and nearby unincorporated areas?
Well, I think there is an distinction to be made between marijuana with the drug taping in it and hemp and pure cannabis for cannabis. And I will do some more research on whether or not the cultivation of hemp, again, for industrial purposes, was part of the ballot measure. My instinct right now is telling me that it was not. And my statement, Shiva Kame Esther, and I have been doing some research on the value of hemp cultivation and processing. And studies have shown, and we've talked to a couple of local ranchers outside the Fillmore city limits, who have turned their orchards over to have production. It actually helps to renew, revitalize the soil. And as we talked about, you know, regarding perhaps the cultivation and processing within the city limits would be an increase in terms of sales tax and much-needed revenue for our city. So I am absolutely willing to look again, you know, of course, given that the ballot measure has passed. Look at the specifics of what is allowed and not allowed in that ballot measure. Look at hemp and really push forward the idea of this possibly being a revenue resource for our city industrial. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, you're up next.
Very good. Thank you. Like Mark said, the community has voted on the subject. The city council cannot overturn the vote of the people. However, here's where I stand. I'm not looking at whether or not any of us should be able to use the product medically or recreationally. What I'm against is the industry coming into our small town. At the time the city council was researching and considering it, our police chief went on a fact-finding tour. He visited cities in Colorado and in Washington, and what he brought back was frightening. There are huge unintended consequences that some have been discussed at length, the health and public safety problems and others that no one had even considered before, like the pesticides and the unregulated pesticides and poisons that were being found in the product being sold. The cost of these problems in other cities has more than offset the revenue. If that were to happen in our small community, we could not sustain it. Now, as far as hemp goes, I don't know if anyone has noticed the smell of the hemp this year and last year, but to me, that makes it a nuisance crop. And I live probably a few miles away from the nearest grove, and I can smell it in the mornings, and it is, if I lived next to it, it would be unlivable. So I would be against it.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Esther. Please share with us your thoughts about marijuana and hemp being grown and processed in Fillmore in the unincorporated areas.
Yeah, I think this is an extremely timely question for right now. So the measure that was being referenced was Measure T, which I believe was for medical-grade cannabis, not hemp. I have explored the potential reasons. I would like to look much deeply, much deeper at this. Number one, we have this debt that the city has acquired due to our sewage plant, our water recycling facility that was very necessary and the right choice to build, but we need to pay this down. Many people in our town are getting water bills upwards of $300. And if we could explore working towards policy that enabled farmers here in town, rather than bringing in an outside industry, to be able to evolve with the times. We are an agricultural community. Many fruit crops are suffering now due to climate change here in town. If our farmers were able to grow industrial hemp to stabilize themselves and keep being able to be in an agricultural lifestyle, while also if we had policy set up to designate a certain amount of that tax revenue to go towards paying down the city debt, I think this would benefit the people who are suffering from these high sewage and water bills. Beyond that, we know the environmental impact of industrial hemp and how nourishing it is to the planet to grow hemp and how much industrial hemp is used for net-zero building, like zero-carbon building, which I believe is the future that we need to move towards when considering climate change.
Thank you. And Esther, we're going to stay with you to begin the next question. So what are your plans about building more housing? And that ranges from lower types of housing up to high-end housing. What do you think are the most important things needed as far as housing in Fillmore?
This is another excellent question. So I believe that we are in desperate need of low-income housing. But my understanding is that Ventura County classifies low-income housing as anything under, or anything under $80,000, which to me is still a decent income. What I would love to see is housing provided for extremely low income. I'm a working-class, single mother, and I have struggled to find housing here in town. Even if I could afford it, it's just not available. This is a necessity. There are people that have lived in this community for five, six generations that are now having to leave because there's no housing available, or they can no longer afford it. This is something that I would love to apply pressure to. We've heard a lot about affordable housing projects that are going to come to Fillmore and then somehow keep getting delayed or postponed. Or we had one project that was supposed to start in town that then changed course, and it's no longer going to be housing. These are things that I would love to keep an eye on because this is not a necessity or this is not a luxury. This is a necessity. There are people that literally can no longer afford to live here. And we need to look at why are we having two, three, four families living in one household? This is unacceptable. There are people that have lived here for generations that should be prioritized when housing comes in, and their income should not prevent them from being part of the community they grew up in.
Thank you. Same question to you, Tim. What are your plans about building from low-income to higher-income housing? And what do you think is the right way and right type of housing to build?
All right. So affordable housing is important and necessary. And we're already doing much to make sure that there will be affordable housing in Fillmore. Contrary to what some are saying, we have two projects underway right now that will total over 120 new affordable units. However, when we talk about affordable housing, the word affordable always sticks in my mind. Affordable to whom? We've come up with this term to define a home in a certain price range. However, affordable housing is not so affordable if your family is a low-income family. And we need to look at what makes even an affordable house out of reach for many families. Also, if you're homeless, it's an impossible dream. Fillmore is working on solutions for our homeless population. Block grant money would help, but because we're a small community, the funds don't come directly to us, and we're at the mercy of the county. In addition, we have to compete for those funds, so it isn't something we can depend on. We need to be creative, and I have an idea that I'm going to bring up at the next council meeting. As far as density, we in Fillmore have a challenge. There's a seven-year cycle where the state of California mandates how much housing that we need to build. Year after year, we keep increasing our density and height restriction in order to remain compliant. It's a problem that's not going to go away, and we need to fight the state's cookie-cutter, one-size-fits-all approach. Let Fillmore decide what growth is smart and makes sense for Fillmore.
Thank you. Mark, same question to you. Your views about housing, what you think's the right way to go?
Well, when considering affordable housing, we need to build market housing also. Otherwise, we can't sustain either. I meant, if we build too much affordable, it's going to be a crisis on the city. The state of California is in a crisis right now for affordable housing and homeless housing. This issue has been laid at the city level at our doorstep as a local government to take care of it. We as a community have already been addressing the market rate issues and the affordable housing. For example, we include a 15% affordable housing component in every development that's over four units. For an example of this could be KB Homes, where they're building seven units of affordable housing. Nobody even mentions that or nor even notices it because it's hidden. You know, there's projects going on in town that are including affordable housing. The city gave Cabrillo land to develop the Central Station project, which now houses 29 farmworker housing units. We developed a Parkview housing project, which houses 50 seniors. The city has done more than its share. As Tim said, we are waiting for many mansions to start. Many mansions will be developed by December. We were waiting for another one, People Self-Help. It's going to be 70 units. So we are doing things for affordable housing. The city collects no revenue tax nor development impact fees for affordable housing. It's a strain on the community. But if developers pick it up, then we can do it.
Thank you. Christina, please share with us your plans for increasing housing in Fillmore.
Absolutely. So I, again, have that public health background and would have to echo previous comments about the dire need for more affordable housing. I'm very happy to hear that People Self-Help Housing and that many mansions is coming. And I believe there may have been probably a delay with COVID in moving those forward. So I do hope to see those move forward. And I also think that we need to put a bit more pressure on developers regarding that 15%. I am advocating for a 20% to 25% affordable housing. Our city desperately needs it. Again, regarding COVID and the number of families that are squeezed into houses right now in Fillmore, I mean, it is a crisis. It's an economic crisis that we're in. It's also a public health crisis to have this overcrowded housing. It's a hazard. So I'm glad to have those, and I'm also glad to see more come in. And I agree that we need to look for creative solutions. I think there's certain areas in the city that could possibly be infill where we look at having, you know, smaller units pop up. You know, it doesn't have to be a big development, but it could be something. Regarding large tract housing, big development housing, I think Fillmore is really where it needs to be in terms of its growth right now. I know that the incoming of the houses is beneficial, but it's also bringing in other issues such as traffic, and so we're going to have to deal with that, too.
Thank you. And we'll wrap up this question with Ari.
I will. I'd like to say that affordable housing is a statewide issue, not just for Fillmore. A balance in housing is of utmost importance to keep our city the way we want to keep it, but also to build affordable housing for our citizens. Also, we have the issue of how much land we have, and that needs to be taken into consideration. I am pleased that we have two new developments coming in for affordable housing. So we are doing things to improve that problem. And we need to get creative and figure out what other maybe places are doing countries and see what their best practices are. But it is a difficult situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next question. Christina, you'll be up first for this one. So the question is climate change. We're seeing the impacts of that of locally, nationally, statewide. Question is, what are your views on climate change? And what do you think specifically the city of Fillmore can do to adapt to climate change as well as combat climate change?
Okay, great. Thank you. This is an excellent question. My views on climate change is that climate change is happening. Climate change is real, as well as global warming. And I think every city, including Fillmore, needs to really take this issue head-on and look for real solutions for our city to move forward for future generations. In terms of what the city can do, I think the city can be an excellent example to our residents in terms of conservation with our water. Particularly, I think that there's areas of the city where we can have an example, again, in city landscape of having drought-resistant, the drought-resistant landscape and plants go on. If the city is able to do that and be an example and perhaps provide incentives to our residents across town, and by incentives, I mean doesn't have any monetary incentives, but, you know, social recognition to undo the many lawns that we know are just being watered and their lawns and maybe don't have small children on them playing. But just to show that, you know, we're adapting, that the city needs to be resilient when it comes to climate change. We also need to always be aware about fires in our area. We, you know, half of California, you know, Northern California has been on fire recently, and we know it's a big concern. And so I think more awareness in our city about that this is, you know, this is what we're dealing with on a regular basis. And I also think it's important that with our high temperatures that we need to continue to watch out for the health of especially the old and the young. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther, what can we do in Fillmore to adapt to changing climate and to combat changing climate?
Excellent question. Number one, we need to talk about it, and we need to acknowledge that this is a legitimate issue facing not just us as a community, but us globally as a human civilization. I'm happy to share that Christina Reyes Vea Senor and I both recently received endorsement from the Central Coast League of Conservation Voters. And we got to speak in depth, and we took our time doing our homework into things that we can do to help stabilize Fillmore. When I was an EMT back in 2017, I worked the first five days of the Thomas Fire. I was part of the ambulance strike team that evacuated Ojai Hospital. It was one of the most challenging experiences of my life, and it became extraordinarily evident to me how extreme climate change is. And I thought in 2017 that that saw more, worse, worse, worse fires bringing us to this state. I think, number one, it's about information and education to the public. Number two, it's about not just focusing on these huge changes that are going to take time, but focusing on the little changes, encouraging local restaurants to be mindful about the packaging that they select to use, encouraging individuals to use reusable drinking vessels rather than plastic bottles. These small changes do add up. But number one is explaining that to people, educating the public, and leading by example.
Thank you. Ari, please share with us your thoughts about adapting to climate change and preventing it.
Well, I do believe in climate change, and I would like us to use the opportunity to maybe create green jobs out there and be a leader in this new new process of job. And our conservation and recycling is important. Drought-resistant plants, watching out for our elderly because of the heat. That's why I volunteer Santa Clara Valley Hospice and VC AAA, which is the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging. Also, it is another balancing act because I, we don't want to put too many fees or extra expenses on our businesses. So I see where maybe they can make some changes, but we want to make sure that they are still able to make a living. Thank you. but we want to make sure that they are still able to make a living. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Mark, you'll be up next. Please share with us your views on climate change, what you think the city can do to adapt and combat climate change.
I, I believe climate change is a national, state and local issue at the, at the moment. At a local level, the city of Fillmore is already implementing climate change measures such as energy efficient lighting in the, in the, in the city hall and the senior center. Their air conditioning units are efficient. We're also requiring building standards be implemented by the city, such as requiring solar as part of new development. We are building vertically instead of horizontally in the downtown area in order to locate the housing close to transit. So when Christina talks about infill development, that's where we have to look for. That's where we need to look. We also implement five star energy features in new development. We are in, we're standing, we're starting to implement the green energy code. We recently just submitted a grant application for electrical vehicle and two electrical charging facilities in town. The grant's still pending, but I expect we'll hear about that soon. The city has received the following awards that do the implementation of climate change measures. Southern Cal Edison and Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance gave gold and platinum energy level awards. We're the first city to receive a platinum award and an emerging energy leader award from the Ventura County Regis, Regional Resource Agency. What I'd like to see is a group of citizens and council members getting together and working on this issue.
Thank you. We'll wrap up the question with Tim. Your views on climate change and adapting and combating it?
Thank you. So does the climate change over time? Of course it does. Otherwise, we'd be having this Zoom meeting in the middle of an ice age. Science tells us that there have been as many as five significant ice ages with approximately a dozen epochs of glacial expansion during the past million years. And I found that on www dot history dot com. It's a natural cycle, and we are at the tail end of the most recent ice age now, which of course means the temperature is rising. Like Mark mentioned, there are a lot of things that the city is doing, both within the city and as far as programs within the community to make sure that, that we are planning for climate change. And I'm not going to repeat everything that, that he mentioned. But I also sat on the, for the first two years of my term on the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance, where we discussed and implemented measures throughout the county regarding efficiency and, and climate change. Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to our next question. Ari, you're up first for this question. Let's talk about business in the central downtown area. Do you have ideas to improve the central downtown area to bring in shoppers? And this could include connecting with Highway one twenty-six tourist services, anything like that. Share with us your view about promoting the economy in central downtown.
Well, I think a wonderful opportunity is those new, the new housing development. It's just that it's town on either side of us. We need to make sure that they see Fillmore as a viable place to shop and go to. And like you mentioned Tourism Bureau, that's why I work with the Heritage Valley Tourism Bureau on how to get other cities to come to Fillmore and see our, how charming we are and our different shops and what we're all about and our great restaurants. I endorse our businesses, whether eating there and promoting them on social media. Before COVID, inviting people from different organizations to lunch. And a lot of them have been coming back because once you come to Fillmore, there is a certain charm about it and, and people really like it. It's a good alternative to where they're living, especially people that live in big crowded cities. So that's why I would like to keep that part of Fillmore the way it is, but also increase businesses through organizations like FAB, the Fillmore Association of Business, that also works tirelessly to create events and whole different ideas on how to revitalize our downtown area. Thank you.
Okay, Christina, we'll move to you. Please share with us your thoughts about improving the central downtown area to bring in shoppers, tourists. Would you connect with one twenty-six? Any particular plans you have?
Yes, absolutely. So I think that the businesses downtown can definitely use a boost. And I know that FAB has been created and is working to bring the tourist industry and people to town to visit our charming town, which I, I commend a hundred percent. But I also think that we need to really promote our merchants that work whose, whose businesses are meant for the residents that are here too. I know there's a lot of our residents who have gone out of town for services that actually can be found here in Fillmore. And that our city can be more of a bridge, you know, in, in that it is the city, using a bullhorn again to, to let those residents know that we actually have services here, goods here for our residents to use. And I would love for, for FAB to be more inclusive. We, myself and Chiva Camiester have been talking to local business owners, again, that are serving more of the, the businesses here in town. And they have not heard of the Fillmore Association of Businesses nor, nor heard from them. And, and that's unfortunate, and I think that we can actually work to change that and to bring all businesses within this organization and look for, for ways to work together on that. In terms of the tourist industry, I know one thing that we also heard is that the filming is good, but the city needs to do a better job about helping merchants during the time of film. Heard that that's an issue, and I look to work on that as well. Thank you.
Okay. And what are your plans to improve central downtown area?
For me?
Yes, Tim.
Yes. So first, I want to thank Ernie Viejas for being the catalyst that gave birth to the Fillmore Association of Business and for working with the city as a consultant on the very important task of economic development. The, the small business is a major factor in the US economy, generating just under fifty percent of our GDP. So too, the small business is a major factor in Fillmore's economy. And FAB is an important element in the revitalization of Fillmore's downtown area. The partnership between the city and FAB is crucial, and that's why we hired Ernie. The local business owner decides what it takes to, to thrive and to grow their business, while the city needs to do what it can to empower business owners to achieve that success. And usually, that means getting out of your way. Because I've run my own consulting practice, I understand and I'm sensitive to the challenges of small sole proprietor type business owners, types of problems they deal with. And I want to continue to do what I can to get government out of the way, to make it easier for you to succeed. We, we recognize that the permitting process has had some challenges, which is why we've been going through the process and finding areas where we can streamline the process to make it easier to empower existing businesses to succeed and to bring new businesses into town. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther, please share with us your thoughts about improving central downtown and with shoppers and tourists.
So as Christina Reyes Viasenor had shared, we have both been speaking to many local business owners around town, one of which including my mother, and the filming issue is enormous. These business owners are not being backed up, and they're having business cut out and being bullied by the filming industry. This is something I would like to look deeply at. In relation to tourism, the, the concept here is that you want to have a destination, which means when someone is considering driving thirty, forty minutes, sixty minutes outside of town to come to Fillmore, they want to hit at least three different spots. They don't want to drive all the way into town just to go to one place and not know if there's a good restaurant or a good place to stay or other places to visit at the same time. So what we need to look at is building a more full system that would bring people in, but also stabilize our economy for the people who live and work in town. And I started looking into the potential for community development block grants that we could utilize in building a business incubator in town. The reason I'm really keen on this specific model is because the National Business Incubation Association found that in the US, for every one dollar of public funding put into business incubators, there's a return of approximately thirty dollars in local tax revenue. It was also found that business incubators are twenty times more effective at providing community jobs than infrastructure projects like industrial parks. This is something that I want to look at deeply.
Thank you. Mark, we're going to go ahead and wrap up with you. Your ideas to improve central downtown?
Yeah, I, I think what, what we have the problem is we need to energize the downtown. We need to vibrant it back up. I mean, it, it looks rundown as a city right now. I meant the planners aren't taken care of. I mean, we need to start there and start fixing up, beautifying it a little more. I think that the events that we're doing that bring people out, out of the community into the downtown, such as a trunk or treat and all those are great. I think FAB's doing a great job. I just don't think they can do it on their own. What I think we need to do is we need to somehow co-join with Santa Paula, Santa Clarita, and do some kind of regional strategy, economic development strategy. As you know, the power's in the numbers. If we can get them on our side, we'll help them, they'll help us. Building vertically in the downtown is one of the things that will bring people downtown. I meant, that's what we thought with the senior housing when we, when we proposed it. I mean, I was on the planning commission when we approved that project. It's worked. People frequent downtown that live in the senior center. I meant the senior housing. We need to take care of the downtown area. I think that's the start, is to beautify it a little more. We need to somehow, oh, the idea of incubators, that's not really going to fly right now because all CGBG funding is going towards homelessness in the county right now. So that's, that's a no-go at this point. Take care.
Tim, we're going to go ahead and start with you on the next question. And we have several questions around the same topic. I've combined them for you. And that's about defunding the police. It's about dealing with racial and social inequalities. So share with us your thoughts about defunding the police. Have you belonged to or have you advocated for defunding the police? And what are your thoughts about racial inequality?
I'm going to read as fast as I can because I had topics, I had information ready for each of those subjects separately. Simple answer is no. No way. I would never support defunding the police because public safety is too important to me. Not only would I not defund the Fillmore Police Department, but if the city budget could handle it, I would advocate increasing the level of our police services. It's important to note that Fillmore has one of the lowest crime rates in the county. Repeatedly, Fillmore makes its way onto lists of the safest cities to live in California. Why is that? Is it because we don't take public service, uh, public safety seriously? No, we take the safety of our citizens very seriously, and that's why I support our police. Nearly everyone would say no to defending the police today. However, my support for law enforcement has remained strong, steadfast and verbal. I have been a lo, I've had a long relationship with law enforcement. In nineteen seventy-six, before finding computers as a career, I had chosen law enforcement. In high school, I was a police explorer, and when I graduated, I joined the military as a law enforcement specialist and dog handler. That made me a canine cop. My police experience in the military was fulfilling. When I left, I began interviewing and testing for a career as a police officer in local departments before I discovered computers. And that's about all the time I've got, so I'll try to answer the rest of that question in other segments.
Okay, thank you. And just in case there's any confusion for the audience, I want to assure everybody that the questions have not been shared with any candidates that came in through our Zoom registration portal, and only two people within the league have seen them. So we're going to move on to Mark. Same question for you, Mark. As far as your views about racial inequality and defunding the police?
I, I, I'm going to start with what Tim said. We're, we're one of the safest cities to live in California, or we have a low crime rate. I, I don't have any vision of reallocating funds from the police narrative. No way. We currently have a police department of ten and a half employees, I meant ten and a half officers, with access to tons more, such as the example was when the Bertha disappeared. It ended up in a tragedy, but we wouldn't have those resources if we had defunded or, or taken, reallocated the resources. Several years ago, the city council reduced resources to the police department. And due to budget constraints, we lost our motorcycle patrol officer, we lost our gang unit. I would, I would advocate what Tim says. I'd like to increase the budget for the police department and bring back our motorcycle police officer. I'm completely satisfied with the quality of officers serving our community. Public safety is the number one role of local government to ensure safety of its residents. Now, as far as the racial inequality, we're working on that as a city. We as a council started the community conversation. We want to hear what's going on. I mean, we're trying to find out what's, what the, what the real issues are in our community. So we are open, we are listening. I participated in the first one September twenty-sixth, as did, I believe, all, everybody on here, except, I, I won't point them out, but everybody on here participated at it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Esther, same question to you. As far as defunding the police, have you been involved with organizations that do that? What are your thoughts also about racial inequality in Fillmore?
Again, another extremely timely question. So as I had stated, I was actually raised by a police officer and then worked besides PD as an EMT. And I saw, I've seen since childhood and then as an adult in my work very closely the disparities in, in training for PD. I, as an EMT, was limitedly trained in how to handle mental health crisis, which is a huge epidemic here in our country. And I would love to look at how funds are allocated inside of the PD. And I know that this is not just an issue of PD not being adequately changed, trained in how to handle racially charged situations or emotionally trying situations, behavioral calls, people that are on autism spectrum disorder, PD just does not have the training for how to respond to this. And that means two things. The public becomes in a situation where they are potentially at danger. And also, these people that are working to protect us are at danger. The last time I checked, the leading cause of death for first responders, including PD and firefighters, is heart attack. And the second leading cause of death is suicide. This is something we need to look at. We need to look at protecting the public from a dangerous PD force, but also protecting PD from not being trained and being able to process and handle the emotional trauma that they're experiencing in their day-to-day life. I would love to look at how we can shift those funds around. Also, not every call needs to be PD. I wish we had social workers or people trained in psychology to respond to some of these calls.
Thank you. Ari, same question to you about your views on defunding the police and racial inequality?
I support our police department. Do I think they're perfect? No. But that's one of the great things about having a relationship with different people in our community. I, Police Chief Garo and I talked about the issues that are, that are related to our specific issues for Fillmore. And that brings to mind the importance of relationship between our police department and the community. Racial inequality should be addressed. We are elected officials for all of our community, and that involves the youth, the mental issues, different races. So we need to always just have the communication open and just spearhead anything that might be going on. I love Fillmore. I feel safe here, and I think people love to raise their children here. It's a beautiful place. But we just always need to be making sure that we're staying true north in what we're doing, just like everything else. And I love all our organizations like Boys and Girls Club, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and so many more that just really do a wonderful job in keeping our kids educated. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina will wrap up with you. Your thoughts about defunding the police? Have you been involved with organizations that advocate for that? And also, what are your views as far as racial inequality and what can be done there?
Okay, great. Thank you. Excellent question. Yes, I have been involved. And I want to say that the community conversation that happened on September twenty-sixth came about, it is a, it was a city sponsored, great conversation, but it did come about by pressure from community activists who didn't feel that the leadership at the council was willing to address it. This is back in June when we saw the murder of George Floyd and, and, you know, and other instances on tape of police brutality. I'm so glad that we're addressing it in our small town because I believe that the issues of, of looking at race and inequality are prevalent across different jurisdictions and, and Fillmore is not without that. Myself and particularly my family, I do have a particular instance of racial profiling that happened here in Fillmore not too long ago with our local PD, and it's really. And it's really left a mark on me to, for something to address. As for defunding the police, I am not about taking away our police force and doing without that. I am about looking at different social structures in government professionals that again can sort of disentangle, right, that our police force do not have to particularly work on the homeless or the mental crisis issues, or even for that parking or neighborly disputes. I think that that can be something that's mediated within the community, and we should look at the budget and allow for that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. Candidates are going to take a step back from actual policy, and let's learn a little bit more about each of you, give you a chance to introduce yourself. Tell us about your background. So, Mark, you're up first. Tell us about your life experiences, your skill set that prepares you to be on the city council, and also, what do you think distinguishes you from your opponents?
Well, I I I think what what distinguishes me is I have sixteen years of experience up on the dais. I I don't think anybody in this chat room has that experience. The other experiences I have are, I own a business, I understand business, I have an MBA, I'm very good at budgeting. I sit on the ad hoc budget committee. I shift the budget around for the resources where that needs to go. So I have that experience. My life experience was I grew up basically in a very poor neighborhood. I had to dig my way up to where I'm at now. So when people talk about, let's say, white privilege, I don't even know what they're talking about because I was not privileged. I had to work for what I got. And that's how my life has been. I don't know what else to say.
That's fine. There's no obligation to use all your time, and we're going to move on to Ari. So we'll ask you to share with us, Ari, a little bit more about your background, your life experiences, your skills, and what you think separates you from your opponents.
Well, I think my leadership skills, inclusivity, approachable, and I speak Spanish. I am able to see different sides and balance out pros and cons. I don't take things personal, or I try not to. I like to just see what the issues are and be mindful of what would be best for our community while also listening to what the voters would like. I grew up in Fillmore. We moved here when I was nine from Los Angeles. I graduated in nineteen eighty-two, so I have been here and loved being here and want to make make sure that the future of Fillmore is as wonderful as it was for me and many others growing up. Thank you.
Okay, Christina, please share with us a little bit about your background, life experiences, skills, and what do you think separates you from your opponents?
Okay, sure, absolutely. So as I mentioned previously, I worked for almost twelve years as a civil servant for the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. And while there, I spent almost six years working particularly in tobacco control, and it's a tobacco control policy advocacy. I went to about forty different cities in LA County and really worked with the community advocates and with also with council members, with city attorneys, did, went to a lot of council meetings, and really understood sort of how how cities work and how things get done in cities and how community advocates can push their agenda forward and, you know, and bring bring the issues but backed up with with data, with information. And that's really how Paul is, how good sound policy gets made. Now I feel that I can be on that other side. I worked, again, primarily with community advocates, and now I feel that I can be a very good decision maker and look at all sides of things and really see the value of making good sound policy for our residents in Fillmore. I also think what sets me apart is that I am committed and have been a lifelong committed to working-class families and to social justice issues. I serve on the board of Cause Action Fund. Cause is an organization that, again, advocates on behalf of farmworkers, working-class families, immigrant families. And it's all about raising people up from the working class to have middle-class equity and and really achievement of the American dream for all people. So I hope that helps and that answers the question. Thanks.
Thank you. Tim, tell us a little bit about your life experiences, skills, and what do you think sets you apart?
All right, well, as Bill Cosby said, I started out as a child. I was born in Pasadena in nineteen fifty-nine. I'm sixty-one years old. I lived in Pasadena until I was seven, when my family moved to the East San Gabriel Valley, where I lived until I entered the Air Force in nineteen seventy-seven. Served in the military as a K-9 cop, and I have a deep respect for law enforcement and public safety. After I was discharged from the military, I started applying at local departments around the San Gabriel Valley and throughout Los Angeles County. It was during this time that I stumbled into computers. A friend of mine was a programmer for the phone company and started teaching me basic programming in his living room. I was hooked, and it changed the direction of my life. That was in nineteen eighty-one. I decided to make a career and went to school for computer hardware repair. The IBM PC was just introduced that year, so I always tell my clients that I was in the delivery room when the IBM PC was born. I have worked in the IT industry now for thirty-nine years, everything from small mom-and-pop computer stores to mid-to-large-size companies, as well as a worldwide entertainment and amusement park mega company. I've even run my own IT consulting company. What sets me apart is that the city needs leaders who can continue the upward trend of the economic development we've begun. I have the experience doing that, as I've sat on the planning commission for six years and the council for four. So along with Mark, we have, we have done a lot to help Fillmore.
Thank you. Esther will wrap up with you this question. Share with us a little bit about your background and what you think distinguishes you from your opponents.
So as I had referenced before, I'm a former EMT and EMT skills instructor. Working as an EMT was a phenomenal experience to me and helped me to foster the compassion for humanity that I have inside of me. And working as a skills instructor enabled me to step into my leadership role, to be able to communicate the things that I know to other people that are in need of that information and to be present in, with people in times of crisis. Working in EMS, it's like a a family. There is so much emotional support that is required to take on day after day of working and seeing these things in life. And I feel that that has enabled me to be adaptable, be present, process difficult emotions in the moment, and stay grounded in high-stress situations. I'm currently a career student now, pursuing an education in psychological neuroscience, which I'm very passionate about. It's a very demanding career path that I'm taking. And so I know that I have dedication. I know I have commitment. I know I have passion. Also, I am a working-class mother. These issues facing the people of Fillmore are not external to me. They are part of me, and this isn't about me just helping people around me. This is something that I also need from my community, and that's change. I think the thing that sets me apart very clearly is my age. I am thirty-one years old. I grew up in this town, and there are many people that I grew up with that have similar ideas and values as me, and I want to represent them.
Thank you. We're going to begin the next question. Christina, we'll start with you. On this question, share with us a little bit about your vision. So if you are elected, what would be some of your priorities? What do you think, and and not just what's your priority, but how do you feel you can accomplish these types of goals? What will you do to help improve the community?
Okay, great. So one of the main things that I have on my platform along with Shiva Kami-Ester is to address the crisis happening with our families and our youth regarding COVID and and particularly just the dire straits that a lot of folks are in right now. We talked about the lack of affordable housing. We know that's down in the pipeline. We also know that there are assets in our community and partnerships that we can, we could advance upon. One thing that we were talking about was that we feel there's a disconnect between the social services in town. And granted, I think most people may think that this isn't the city's place maybe to come in, but I'm passionate about that. Again, I have my background in public health. I know that it's complicated when when people need to apply for health insurance, such as Medi-Cal. If you've lost a job because of COVID and you had employer-based insurance, how do you do that? What is available? That's available right here in our town. Also, food security in terms of gain assistance and also utilizing, excuse me, the food shares that are that are here in town, that's here. But again, there needs to be a bridge. So I see a vision, an immediate vision of us having really like a resource hub and working on that to connect these social services for the families, the working families here in Fillmore who need them desperately. I also am looking again at these economic development issues. I know that there might be barriers and things with the county, but I really do want to explore and look outside the box and look to see where we can bring jobs to our, to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther, please share with us your views about what you're going to try to accomplish, how you'll do that, what you've done to help the community, or what you want to do to improve the community?
Excellent. So first of all, I want to say that Christine and I have both talked about this, and we've said it on our live streams to the public numerous times, that regardless of if we get into office or not, these ideas that we're putting forth, we are committed to and we are going to follow through on. So many people in the community have already reached out to us and have expressed their concerns and their ideas. There are so many ideas in the people that live in town. And I think that in the city, we face this money issue. We don't have money to do that. End of conversation. And we don't consider the assets that we do have, which is this strong community pride and the want for us to be collaborative and to have success with each other. We have a strong sense of community. For instance, like right now in COVID, food shares in town have popped up just from individual organizations, having nothing to do with the city. And I think this is a beautiful example of something that the city could come in and scaffold onto, right? Creating an information connection so that people who are providing resources to the community could centralize that information to people that are in need of those resources, rather than putting all the weight on City Hall by itself. We have a strong community sense, and we should be tapping into that untouched resource. I also would immediately declare June Pride Month for Fillmore. We are the only city in the county of Ventura that has not done that. And several parents and youths in the town have expressed how appalling that was and how it's not just about letting them know that they're welcome here, but that they're safe here and that we support them.
Thank you. And Mark, please share with us your thoughts if you're elected, what you'll be working on for the next few years, how you hope to accomplish that, and how you hope to improve the community.
First, I'd like to address Esther's comment. We had one council meeting in June. That letter came to us at the end of June, and we couldn't respond until July. So we're supposed to do June, recognize them in July for June? No, that was impossible. So that, what my vision is for Fillmore is, is to strengthen and grow the local economy. Attracting and retaining local businesses is a top priority, getting businesses in our business park, such as, I work, I I work, I mean, I I'm on the ad hoc committee for the element, element, economic development. We began looking at the business park and saying, hey, what's wrong with the business park? Why isn't it generating businesses? Well, we went on, we went, we went and looked at the funding that was needed. There was too much upfront funding needed at the business park. There were CAF fees, common area improvement fees. So as the ad hoc committee, we we kept looking at it going, nah, this isn't right. We should, we should eliminate that kind of stuff. So we went to council, and council adopted, eliminated it. We've already started seeing economic growth out in the fil- in the business park. We have one development that's going to be a pretty big development that's that's proposed right now. It's going through the planning process. We've already had other businesses contact us since we we've done that. So my vision is we're going to continue down that road to to, with that vision.
Thank you. Ari, please share with us your vision, what you hope to do to accomplish, and how you're going to achieve that.
Well, I'd like to do more of what I'm doing. If elected, I will be hitting the road running because with my experience and developing the relationships that I have developed for many years with government officials and businesses and the community, it gives me a head start to further what I have been doing and give it a different, it gives me a different way of helping out the community than what I've been doing. And I think that's really valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are going to wrap up with Tim on this question. Tim, what are your goals if you're elected? What's your vision? How are you going to accomplish those?
Yeah, well, first is public safety. Fillmore is often listed as one of the safest cities in California, making the top ten list two years ago. I'll continue to give my enthusiastic support to the men and women who protect and serve our community. Second goal is economic development. During my term, we've had several new businesses move into town, employing many of our residents. We also recognize that the permitting process has some challenges that were, it was making it difficult for new and existing businesses to grow. So we've identified areas where that process can be streamlined, and we will continue to streamline that process. That fee that Mark was talking about earlier was called the Common Area Infrastructure Fee, and it made wanting to build in the business park nearly impossible. Working with staff over the past few years, we've unwound the these fees as part of a systematic approach to making Fillmore more business-friendly. Over the past few years, under the direction of the current council, we've started to see some movement in the business park. And the third, third priority is the COVID-nineteen. Over the course of the last six and a half months, the response to COVID-nineteen has decimated the community. The economy is starting to rebound, but many people have lost their jobs and their homes and their life savings. Since March, I have been in contact constantly with the City Director of Emergency Services by phone, Zoom, and in person. I've been in touch with federal and state representatives.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Esther, we're going to start the next question. I'm going to try and get two questions in at one because I don't think either one of these take a minute and a half. The first question is, how important is it to you that city council and public meetings be available in another language and why? And then also, what do you think about the new or the Fillmore Aquatic Center? Should the high school aquatics have access to that? What's, what would you do to make sure that happens?
These are great questions. I'm going to focus on translation services because this is incredibly important. There is a large population in our community that speaks Spanish, and there is absolutely nothing wrong with that. And I feel that there's an insane amount of pressure on Spanish speakers to learn English and no incentive at all for us to learn how to collaborate with each other. There are people who need representation that feel that they're not welcome at the table. Going to city council meetings is stressful and can bring up anxiety. And if you don't know the language, that's going to be overwhelming. And to feel like you're not welcome there because there's not a translator provided is unacceptable. It is the year 2020, and we need to start evolving and collaborating with one another. These are not just regular people in our community. Many of the backbone people of our community are Spanish speakers. And not only should they be welcome, but they should, should they be acknowledged and valued and have translation services provided to them, not only for city council meetings, but at at a resource hub so that when they have to fill out paperwork or when they have an issue with a neighbor and there's a language barrier, that can be resolved. In relation to the pool, this is something that was recently brought to the attention of Christina and myself that we have begun to do our homework on and look into. I would love to see what the barriers are that are preventing this and how we can navigate around them because this is meant to be for the community, and that involves everybody.
Thank you. Tim, please share with us your thoughts about ensuring that the high school has access to the Aquatic Center and also what your views are about the city council and public meetings being available in other languages.
Sure. The, the pool is is actually in a little bit of need of maintenance. In fact, it's just been drained, and we've just received a quote for how much it is going to cost to replaster it. It's, we're going to be discussing it at the next city council meeting. I can't go into my feelings on that matter naturally because it's about to be voted upon. As far as translation services at the meeting, I spoke about that when we had the vote on Spanish translation and interpretation. I believe, and so far, it seems as though I am correct, that this is not the way to reach out to the Spanish-only speaking members of the community. If you think about it, I believe every city in the county of Ventura has tried it and abandoned it. And we've been doing it now for, I believe it's been over a year, and the service has actually been used a small handful of times and maybe once by someone who is a Spanish-only speaker. It has not brought the community out. It has not brought people to the table. They still feel disenfranchised. If they're feeling disenfranchised, giving them translation services at the meeting is not what's going to help them. What's going to help them is to go out and work with them at their table.
Thank you. Mark, your thoughts about providing translation services and also the Aquatic Center?
Well, I'd like to point out that we we do provide translation services. We do provide interpretation at the council meetings. We provide it on our Zoom meetings. We do the agendas in Spanish. So for for people to say we're not doing it, we're already doing it. I, I'll re-mimic what Tim said. We've, we've had very few speakers come in, in the year. We've had maybe seven or eight that came in. And they spoke, but other than that, we haven't had very, very much participation. I agree with him. We need to do more reach out to the community. We also have been providing letters and mailers sent, sent in Spanish. We've been publishing on our social media in Spanish and English. So to say we're not really doing it, we are doing it. The other issue of the pool, that's a tricky one because the pool is primarily paid by the city. The school uses the pool a lot. So we've been talking, we, we've had several discussions. I shouldn't say talking. We've had discussions, disagreements among council members. But we need to meet with the school board and discuss how we're going to get future funding from the school district because the district has a lot more money than the, than the city does and they can afford to pay more. And Tim, you're right. We're going to, we're going to be doing a big chunk of money to resurface that pool.
Christina, please share with us your thoughts about the pool and how important is it to you to have translation services available?
Okay, sure. I'll touch on the translation services first. So I am very glad that the city does have the translation services that they have now. It was a, a real big effort to get that passed in the city and I'm glad it's part of the budget. And I, I, I think we need to go a little bit deeper and ask the question, why? And Tim happened to put on a little bit, you know, it's one thing to have a service there. It's another thing to make the community feel welcome to come and use it. And I think that there has been a past in Fillmore that, you know, that hasn't been there welcoming the Spanish-speaking community. You know, again, if you look back, hey, so we got translation put up, you know, just the last couple of years. When we have, you know, 60% of homes have our Spanish speakers, not monolingual, but speak Spanish. And a quarter of the children are English language learners. So we do, but I differ from Tim in thinking that we have to go out to the community and work with them out there. I think we actually, the power structure of our city where decisions are made are at city council. And I think that we need to do, you know, whole more civic events and in terms of civic engagement, how to be, participate civically in government with our Spanish-speaking community at council in the city hall environment is very important. As for the pool, I believe there's a parcel tax. I do think we need funds also to work with the school board, absolutely. And if we can't afford more, then we might have to raise that parcel tax.
Thank you. Ari, please share with us your thoughts of how you feel that translation, is it very important to you and also what you think should be done about the pool?
Okay, I'm going to start with the pool. At first glance, of course, you, you think the school should be able to use the pool. You know, it's important for our youth. But I realize that there are other issues, financial issues that need to be looked into. I think we, that's something where we're going to have to work together, use those relationships that we have between the school and our local government to come up with something that is fair to both. And so that's something to work on. As far as city council and different language, we are elected as representatives for all of our community. But I understand that there's a lot of education and relationship building that needs to happen. Different groups have different needs. We need to find out what those needs are first so that we can better serve them. Working with the Fillmore Active Adult Center, every Monday I call about I don't know, 60 to 80 people that are Spanish speakers. And I'm building a relationship that way. They're getting to trust me and that's something we need to do more of. And so that is one of the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, I don't have time for a full question, but we can get in one if you're all able to handle it in a single minute. So this, we're going to change the timer to a minute. Mark, you're up first. We haven't talked about this yet tonight, but if you can share with us any particular strategies that you'll advocate for, for seniors or the disabled, or can you go about, just share with us your thoughts about improving life for seniors and those with special needs?
Well, I was going to say, we, we, we already have the senior center. It serves meals to the community. We've had, we've had during the COVID runners running and delivering meals to them. I think that we have an elderly community. It, it needs, it needs to be recognized that we have an older community and we need to cater to the community, the, the old, the senior community. As far as disabilities, I, I, I agree. We, we need to also cater to disabilities. That's all I have to say.
Thank, thank you. Ari, we'll go to you next. As far as programs, things you would advocate for, for seniors and those with special needs?
Right. Um, well, like I said, I do, I am appointed by Fillmore City Council for the VC AAA. And I work with the Santa Clara Valley Hospice as the vice president. I like to let everyone know about our cooling centers and did call a majority of the 400 people on our list at the VC, at the Active Adult Center and found out that a lot of the people only have fans and no air conditioning. So educating them that they can come to the Active Adult Center, you know, for a spell and get cooled off. They were very, they were happy that I called and let them know of that. We do serve the meals and everyone does it with pride. People are super happy and we get a lot of thanks. VC AAA has programs that they offer for free, including nutrition and fall education. So we promote that. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina, share with us your thoughts about helping seniors and those with special needs?
Sure, absolutely. So when COVID started, I also worked with Lynn Edmonds and Ari may have been part of this too, to call the seniors and, and check in on them and tell them, you know, about the, the meals that were available to them. They were so happy to talk to someone on the phone and to have, know that representatives and volunteers from the city were checking in on them. I think of the isolation and the lack of interaction that's happened, oh, for, you know, the last seven months or so on the part of the seniors, on a part of the disabled. And also the isolation of our, our teenagers, our high schoolers. And, you know, not being able to go to school and spend a lot of time on, you know, TikTok or whatever it may be. And I think there's an opportunity there to see where we can possibly, you know, pair up high schoolers, possibly even to visit the seniors. And again, I don't, I don't mean going inside. I'm talking about social distance, mask on, maybe meet them in the front yard for a chat. But I think that could really raise the spirit of our seniors and also of our young people. So that's one idea. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Tim, your thoughts about policies to help seniors since those were special needs?
Sure. First, before I get into that, I just want to comment on how thrilled I was to hear what Ari is doing at the senior center and calling people who are closed up because of the current pandemic situation. A lot of people talk the talk, but, but Ari's there walking that walk. Anyway, I also, as she did, I want to mention the VCAA. We have two community members that were appointed by the council that sit on that body advocating to that, to that body for the seniors and others in this community, specifically here in Fillmore. As far as assisting seniors, seniors need to know what, what's available for them. I remember about a month or two ago, on one of the hottest days that we had, a woman called me concerned about the heat day, asking if the cooling center was open. And so we had to make sure that it was open and make sure that we got her there. There are other things that we need to do as well.
Thank you. And Esther will wrap up with you for this question about seniors and those with special needs.
So first I want to touch on the special needs and all of this ties then to having a central resource hub where information is available so people can make those connections. One thing is informing the public specifically with autism spectrum disorder, which is not a disorder at all, just a different way of being and creating information so people know how to interact with these completely normal human beings so that it's no longer the stigma or situation where people feel uncomfortable. In relation to seniors, as an EMT, I worked several calls with seniors that were absolutely heartbreaking. I don't think anybody should have to die alone. I don't think anybody should have to go weeks or months without having human touch or meaningful conversation with somebody. I know four different teenagers in town right now that are doing pinball programs with seniors from all over the, the country. But none of them are pinpalling with seniors in town because there doesn't exist right now a resource to connect people in town. And I think mentorship programs between teens and seniors could be extremely beneficial.
Thank you. Candidates, great job. You all were able to adapt to the one minute. Very nicely done. We're going to go ahead and begin with closing statements. We'll reverse the order from the beginning. Christina, you'll be up first. You'll have a minute and a half for your closing statement when you're ready.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, again, thank you for having this candidate's forum. I hope that my answers have been, you know, beneficial to hearing about my stance on different, on different things across our city, our different issues and priorities that we're looking for. I just want to reiterate the endorsements that I've received from the community here in Ventura County. I've been endorsed by the Carpenter's Union. I've been endorsed by the Labor's Union. I've been endorsed by three Democratic Parties and also Cause Action Fund, the Women's Political Council, and most recently the League of Conservation Voters. So I feel that I have, have the skills necessary to be a good leader on council. I feel that I, again, will prioritize working families, look for good paying jobs in the city. And also when it comes to union jobs, if the city were to hopefully have, you know, the funds and work with developers to, to have more housing here in the city or other developments. Again, priorities that I have are about serving our families that are in dire need now with COVID. But beyond that, looking to again, build those resources that our city has and look at our assets. I, I can agree that many times the answer has been no, but I think if we come together and look at the assets that all of our residents have across all spectrums and different neighborhoods, our community, that we'll find, we'll find answers there to look, to work together and come together for Fillmore. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Ari Larson.
Hi, I wanted to speak about the cards to seniors. It's just a day, it'll be coming out tomorrow, that we will be making 420 cards for Halloween or Harvest Cards. And they will be handed out the Monday before Halloween to everybody that's collecting their food. And we'll write little messages in there. Girl Scouts are making some, but we're going to put it out. So anybody that would like to make a card can do so and just use their creativity, make it a fun thing for people to read. And if it works out, we're also going to do it for the holidays. Running for Fillmore City Council will give me a new way of keep helping the community. I've been here working and all community members for years. I know what they need. I know what they want. And this will give me more access towards helping them. I, in closing, I was honored to be named the 2019 Fillmore Citizen of the Year. And that is why I am best for Fillmore. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Esther Taylor.
So again, thank you everybody for taking the time to view this either live or in a recording at a later point. And thank you for all the candidates for being present. This was a long time coming and I think really valuable to our community to hear from all of us on these important issues that everybody has on their heart right now. I want to say that if the past four years has been good to you and you are happy with the status quo, I applaud you. But if you would like change and you'd like to see something new come in, I encourage you to consider voting for myself, Esther Shiva Kamie Taylor and Christina Reyes Viasenior. We are committed to building a more equitable future for Fillmore. This is not about her or me. This is about a movement that started in our community that we jumped into, that we decided that we wanted to help facilitate coming to fruition. I want to say that I know that I am incredibly young to be taking this on and that I have seeked mentorship to, from many people in the community and that I am committed to having those open conversations. Many of you already know this. If you want to know more about me and about our platform and about my bio and questions and issues and concerns that you may have, please reach out. I am doing my best to make myself available to the public in a way that I was not familiar with when I sought, sought to speak to our current leadership.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Mark Austin.
First, David, I'd like to thank you for moderating this forum. In concluding, I, I have the experience and past dedication of, of the city through 16 years as a council member and a planning commissioner. It's not just any job, it's not a job that just anybody can handle. There's a lot of stress that goes at being a council member. As your council member, I will continue to strengthen and grow the local economy by attracting and retaining local business is a top priority. I will continue to work to streamline the permit process. Provide public safety and resources for a secure community. The city is recognized, as we have mentioned, as one of the safest cities in the state of California. Over the past years, over the last four years, I provided the funding needed to maintain our police and fire departments. I will continue to ensure our public safety professionals are provided with resources needed to keep our community safe. Maintain and improve our small town quality. Through smart planning and managed growth, we can keep this atmosphere. Throughout my years as a planning commissioner, city council member, I have focused on maintaining and proving the unique small town character. Please vote for Mark Austin on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Tim Holgram.
Well, thank you, David. You, you've done a wonderful job and so has the rest of the League of Women Voters staff. Being a council member is a massive responsibility. It's not for those who are looking to step into it with no previous experience at serving in this capacity or exposure to it. Prior to becoming a city council member, I was on the Fillmore Planning Commission for six years, chairing the Planning Commission for four of those six years. For four years prior to joining the city council, I attended city council meetings, nearly every meeting for four years as an interested private citizen. I had met with council members and staff to learn as much as I could about budget, planning, and everything that goes into leading a city. I think that's something that every citizen should do. You can't do this job effectively without a background in it, or at least exposure to what it takes. You also have to recognize that more often than not, government tries to do too much and take too much of a role in our lives. Thomas Paine said, "Society in every state is a blessing, but government in even its best state is but a necessary evil and in its worst state, an intolerable one." Ronald Reagan said, "The nine most terrifying words in the English language are, 'I'm from the government and I'm here to help.'" I intend to continue to keep your city government from becoming an intolerable evil and to continue to help our city thrive by keeping government out of your way as much as I can. Vote for me on November 3rd.
Thank you, candidates. Before we wrap up, we have a couple of special things, presentation. But I want to take a moment to thank each of you for running for office. It's a long, hard job and without it, democracy doesn't work. We always need candidates. And I'm sorry you don't have a live audience tonight to give you a well-deserved round of applause. So let me take a moment though, to share with our audience and with you this important little presentation from the League of Women Voters, talking about how your vote will work this year. So you have several options for returning your ballots. Every registered voter will be mailed a ballot. You can return it through the postal service at a convenient ballot drop box, or you can actually take it to one of the voting centers through the last few days before elections. Now, there's many important dates to keep in mind. Soon, this weekend, we should see ballots start to mail to registered voters. These ballot box drop-off places will start to open. If you have not received your ballot by October 16th, the league encourages you to call the elections department to find out where it's at. Very important, we encourage you to mail your ballots no later than October 20th. That means it'll most likely be received by the elections department in time to be counted on election night. It's important to know that all ballots that are mailed in must be postmarked by November 3rd. They can still be counted up for two weeks as long as they are mailed by, are, they are postmarked by November 3rd. There's a couple of very good resources available for you. Number one is the wheresmyballot.sos.ca.gov. You can go there and just fill in your name and a couple of key pieces of information and they will tell you where your ballot is, when it's first in the mail to you. Then when it's going in the mail back, has it been received by the elections department? So you'll have the comfort of knowing that your ballot has truly been received. Votersedge.org is another excellent website where you can go and put in your address and find out about all the candidates running in your area and statewide ballot propositions. We also encourage you to go back to the LWVventuracounty.org website where you first registered for tonight. And on that site, you'll find links to ballot propositions. We call them the pros and cons. And also the video for tonight's And also the video for tonight's candidate's debate will be there as long with, along with all of the other forums that we've already recorded. So I'd like to again, thank all of our candidates for participating with us. And I'm not sure if that worked for you all or not, but if not, at this point, it's the end of the evening. Thank you all for joining us. And we'll remind you to vote November 3rd. And if you do get a ballot and mail it in, make sure you sign the outside envelope when you mail back your ballot. I'm David Maron with the League of Women Voters, quickly thanking our volunteers Cheryl, Elizabeth, Maddie, Betsy and Pat. Thank you all and have a good evening.